Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting on October 15. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones if you have one with you. And if you wish to address the board this morning, please make sure you sign in at the comment table at the back by the entrance. Or if you're online, put a note in the chat that you wish to make public comments so that recorder Erica Milo can alert us to that fact. And if you're presenting to the board today, please note that the microphones in the room at the table up front are on when there's a little red ring that shows around the top. And you need to keep the mic pretty close to yourself in order to be audible. That's it for general housekeeping. With that introductions, I'm Zan Ojero, Board Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Nancy Carney, County Council.
Rick Craig, your Assistant County Administrator.
And in the room, we'll start over here with April.
Ginger Richardson, Republic Affairs for Public Services.
Brett Davis, Republic Services.
Julie Jackson, Republic.
You've been at Republic Services.
Brett Arsh, Republic Services.
Dr. Barman Wolf, Program Manager.
Chelsea Chick, Emergency Management Coordinator for the Sheriff.
For what else, Board of Commissioner staff.
Anne Quee, TIO, through the Commissioner's office.
John Redd, BSC.
And online.
Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff.
And Eric.
Thank you very much. And all acknowledge John Harris, the man behind the curtain. Okay, next up is comments from the public. Do we have anyone who wishes to make public comment this morning? Oh. It feels like a Monday. I apologize. I do not believe we have anyone who wishes to make public comment. We will move on to the proclamation and welcome Chelsea Chick up to the front table from our emergency operations center.
Good morning. In the matter of proclaiming October 2024 as Great Shakeout Month in Benton County, the threat of the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake will greatly affect the entire region, including the residents of Benton County, Oregon. The U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, have identified the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake as a major national level threat. When individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. The Great Oregon Shakeout was designed to bring awareness of the threat of both crustal and subduction zone earthquakes. The Benton County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Division partners with federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies to inform individuals on how to take action through our public education campaigns and community exercises. Residents, businesses, and visitors of Benton County, Oregon are urged to plan ahead for all disasters and encourage their family and their friends to also do so by participating in annual readiness events and drills. Benton County Emergency Management and the Benton County Emergency Operations Staff will participate in the national level exercise, Iron Ore 2024. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Benton County Board of Commissioners that October 2024 is Great Oregon Shakeout Month and encourage all community members, businesses, and visitors to develop their own emergency preparedness plans and practice basic earthquake safety drills such as drop cover and hold on on October 17 at 10:17 a.m.
Thank you very much. I note that you said it was at 10:17, not 10:19, as it says in the proclamation. So we will make that correction.
Thank you.
Is there any motion?
I'll move to proclaim October 2024 is Great Shakeout Month in Benton County. Proclamation E2024 Day 020.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Thank you and thank you very much. I'm assuming you have all been planning pretty full time for this big exercise.
Yes, we have several hours in, but we're very excited. And then tomorrow, we'll also be participating in the countywide shakeout with the Emergency Operations Center staff. So we'll be taking photos and sending those into our safety officer.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
I saw an email encouraging us to participate on Thursday and do the drop and cover and take a selfie and send it to Ray. I can't.
We'll all be under tables in the ESE tomorrow just to participate even for Thursday. So yes.
Okay, so if we find people under their desks on Thursday, it's okay.
You know why. Yes.
And Anna, I appreciate this. It's a serious earthquake. How do they put that? A low incidence of happening, but a high effect results. We need to be reminded regularly that it's out there. Appreciate your department helping with that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Okay, I did not review the agenda with you all. Are there any additions to the agenda before we proceed? No changes? Okay, with that, then we will move on and begin with our public health update with Sarah Hartstein.
Good morning. It's great to see you all. Sarah Hartstein, she/her, interim Public Health Director. Just going to provide you with a quick fall respiratory update this morning. So the graph that you're seeing this morning is COVID-19 hospitalizations over time since the beginning of the pandemic. And if you look at the top line, all the way to the right, we're seeing just an overall downward trend at the moment for COVID-19 hospitalizations. That is the week ending 10/8, and there were 158 individuals hospitalized in Oregon. In comparison, on August 5, there were 233. So you're seeing that we're we kind of have these hills and valleys, but overall, it's trending downward at the moment. The wastewater data is showing a decrease as well. Wastewater monitoring can often be timelier than hospital data catching trends earlier. So if you see that 22% of the wastewater testing sites are experiencing a sustained decrease, those are the blue dots. 3% are experiencing a decrease, 68% are plateauing. Only 8% are experiencing an increase. This was last updated on October 9. It is, we do have the 2425 COVID-19 vaccine available now. It is pretty early. Folks are just beginning to engage in uptake of the vaccine. Benton County is at 6.2% vaccination rate for this new fall vaccine as of 10/14. And we're trailing Washington County and Multnomah County by just a little bit. So we want to thank everybody who's already engaged in receiving their fall booster to protect them and others from severe illness and other more severe consequences of the disease. This is an opportunity to promote the vaccine for COVID-19. So it's still recommended for all ages six months and older, for all that are five years and older, whether they've been vaccinated or not previously. And one shot is recommended. And then for those that are under five, previously vaccinated, also recommending the single vaccine. Although unvaccinated individuals under five may require two to three doses. We know it's important to stay up to date on the COVID-19 vaccine. The protection from the vaccine decreases with time. And the updated vaccine provides the best protection from currently circulating strains. So some folks, for the general population, it was discouraged to get a booster until the fall booster was available. And now that it's available, we're encouraging folks to get vaccinated, make an appointment. Getting the fall vaccine is especially important for those that have never received the vaccine, for folks who are 65 years and older. If they're an individual who has a higher risk for severe COVID-19. If you're living or working in a long-term care facility, or if you're pregnant, breastfeeding, or trying to get pregnant, or might become pregnant. And then of course, for individuals who are interested in lowering their risk of getting long COVID. We are reaching out to our long-term care facilities to ensure that they are either have a vaccine clinic scheduled or that they're partnered with a vaccine provider to get that scheduled. So we're working with pharmacies, our communicable disease team, and our immunization program to make sure that that's that that's happening this fall. I also want to share with you the weekly emergency department visits by viral respiratory illness type. So COVID-19 is the top line, which is orange. Influenza is the blue line, which is in the middle. And then the purple line is RSV. Emergency room tracking is a way to have a better snapshot of activity more representative of the full population in comparison to the hospital data, which tends to skew towards older populations. As you can see, RSV and flu are it's low at the moment. It has that the respiratory season for those two viruses hasn't gotten into full swing yet. It's a perfect opportunity to get vaccinated at this point. For the week ending in 10/5, that's at the very end of the graph. 1.7% of the ED visits were for either COVID, flu, or RSV, with COVID making up 1.6% of those visits. RSV vaccination is now available. Adults 60 to 74 at increased risk of severe RSV are recommended to engage in uptake. And everyone 75 and older, and all pregnant individuals, 32 to 36 weeks of pregnancy in the fall season are recommended to deliver protection for the infant after delivery. Or if a pregnant person misses that opportunity, there is an RSV antibody available for all infants after birth, and that's recommended. It's also recommended for some toddlers who are at an increased risk for RSV. And of course, flu vaccines are recommended for everyone six months and older every season. The CDC has new respiratory virus guidance. There's new evidence that's led to this update. And a couple of things that have happened is that there's effective vaccines for all three of the major respiratory viruses for the fall and winter seasons, so COVID, flu, and RSV. There's effective treatments now available for COVID-19 and flu, and they're widely available. And then overall, the population has, I think we're at around 80, 85% immunity to COVID-19, which is leading to fewer hospitalizations, complications, and death. And so the guidance has really been simplified. And the recommendations are to get immunized, engage in basic hygiene practices, hand washing, cleaning surfaces, and engaging in kind of airflow in indoor spaces and gathering outdoor when possible. And then of course, if someone is ill, to seek treatment and stay at home to prevent the spread. There are additional prevention strategies that folks can engage in that just layer that, layer the prevention. If there are respiratory illnesses that are that are increasing in a community, or if an individual or others around them have a higher risk factor for severe illness, or if an individual has been recently exposed, are sick, or recovering from the illness. And so that's the additional prevention strategies. Look like masking or additional social distancing and testing. So the, I am missing a slide, but I will just tell you that the general advice for community members that don't have direct healthcare responsibilities is to stay home 24 hours after a fever is gone and symptoms are improving. This is for all of the three major viruses. And that individuals can go about normal activities, taking added precautions for five days. And so as long as that fever is gone and that symptoms are improving, folks can go back to work with or school, but just engage in enhanced hygiene practices, wearing a well-fitting mask, keeping distance from others, et cetera. Thank you. That's all I have for you this morning.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Sarah this morning? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
I think most of us have experienced some of this wave of COVID, so glad to see it's waning again.
I agree.
Next is the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve our consent calendar.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an "aye."
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on now to old business. And the first item is 7.1, Revised 2023 Coffin Butte Landfill and Pacific Region Compost Annual Reports. And we have several folks from Republic with us, but I believe Julie is the lead presenter today, and Bailey from our staff. Please come on up.
Okay, I think we're on. I wasn't aware that I was the lead presenter today, so I've brought Ginger Richardson with me. And we can certainly go over questions, concerns about the annual report. How would you like to handle this, since we've made the presentation of the annual report previously?
We don't need a formal presentation. If you want to highlight the changes that you've made, that would be great. I know that they were highlighted in the report itself and in the packet, but just for anyone that might be viewing and joining us, that would be great. And I know the report was reviewed by the Disposal Side Advisory Committee. So I'd like to have Bailey speak to that as well. And we may or may not have some follow-up questions.
And just to clarify, I think we're talking really just about the Coffin Butte report and not the hauling company report today, although I think that still needs to be approved.
Okay. Yep. It's just the Coffin Butte and the Pacific Region Compost.
Good morning, Commissioners. Administrator Craig, attorney. We're happy to be back here to present the Revised Coffin Butte 2023 Annual Report. The last time we were here, the Commissioners asked us to add additional information first about the status of surface emissions monitoring from the EPA and their subsequent report that was delivered to us. So we did add that, the information as we knew it, into the report. There have been no updates since this report has been submitted. So what you have in that packet is the most recent information that we have as it relates to EPA surface emissions monitoring. You had also requested that we add information into our odor reporting section that dealt specifically with reports that had come into Benton County. So you will see in there, many thanks to Bailey, who was able to provide us with a grid of all of that information, some additional context and a listing and breakdown of those concerns that had been sent directly to the county, as well as some mitigation steps to deal with some of the reports, including roadside cleanup and things of that nature. So those are the primary two additions to the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions about either of them or any other information that's in the document.
All right, well, I had a couple of questions more on the lifespan of the facility. And the years keep changing, at least slightly. But is it correct without the quarry expansion? We've got six months, four months of capacity left?
I believe so. I'm going to ask Ian, because he's the one who's the keeper of the latest numbers. But we have, we have the space in the quarry, which, as you know, we have been working. which, as you know, we have been working aggressively to excavate and prepare that for, for waste disposal. The current cell that we are in is still 5E, correct, Ian?
Yes, that's correct. We're constructing, we're, I mean, we're wrapping up construction of cell 6A, which is in the western corner of, or eastern corner of the quarry.
And I believe 5E, I think that's correct, Commissioner Malone's correct, that it's, it's got about six months-ish.
Yeah, we're going to start filling a portion of 6A up within the next few weeks, probably.
That's the quarry.
That's the, the most eastern portion of the quarry. Yes, it's, it's up against the side of cell five and cell three.
We call it a sliver cell. It's a, it's a small part that we've started to, well, I guess we're well past starting to construct, we're almost done constructing DEQ requirements and things of that nature.
I guess part of my concerns is just how close you seem to be cutting the need for the quarry cell. And I know you've been working on that for several years and kind of a relatively slow pace. And then the bell went off and you started just excavating and moving it to your site over on Highway 20. So all the excavation is finished at this point?
Yes, Knife River will be finishing up the excavation on the western portion by the end of the year. So that, that's not our site on Highway 20, that's Knife River's.
Oh, okay.
That's all part of Knife River's operation.
That, that's what I meant. Just, like I said, it seems like kind of cutting it close, that you knew this was coming. And I guess I'm a little surprised that we're, we're talking about a few months capacity in the current cell. And then, so I, I don't have a real clear picture how you can use part of the quarry cell. Does that have the liner in place and it's all?
Yeah, the quarry will be a whole bunch of sub-cells. So we build, rather than, I mean, the quarry is a lot of acres. So rather than building that all out at once, we build out typically enough for about a year and a half to two years of life at a time. So we just build out these sub-cells. So we're currently building 6A. Next year, we're going to build 6B, and then we'll see D. So it'll continue from there. So that, that's pretty typical, though. We build out in smaller phases.
I, I didn't understand, I just understood cell six and quarry, and so that's helpful.
Yeah, Commissioner Malone, I, I mean, I think this is probably not our preferred way to do this, which is why, you know, we requested the expansion initially back in 2021, 2021. But we, and, and we've been hopeful to, to move through that process and BCTT without having to go into the quarry, because it is a very difficult area to engineer in terms of sloping and liner and making sure that any cells that we construct there are, are, you know, permitted and done in accordance to all DEQ regulations. And so it is a process that, that takes some time. And so that's why, you know, when we, when we realized we were at the point where we, we didn't have an option, we were going to have to go into the quarry because of the, the land use process with the county on the expansion, we did start initiating negotiations with Knife River to do that excavation with the plan, as, as Ian said, to make sure that we had 6A not only constructed, but permitted and approved by DEQ in time to ensure continuity of waste disposal from 5E into the new cell.
Does DEQ inspect each new cell as it's constructed?
They do. They approve, they review and approve the plans prior to construction, and they'll make periodic visits. And then at the end, they review the construction report that our third-party consultant puts together and typically visit the site at the end of the project to review it.
And I'm assuming that drainage is planned for and all of the usual infrastructure that you need to have in place?
Yes, all the, the liner systems, the leachate collections, gas collection, all of that is part of the construction and part of the approval process with the EQ.
And the, the whole quarry site adds estimated 13 years to the, or 12.9 years to the life of Coffin Butte?
Yes, that's the, the estimate.
Yeah.
It varies a bit depending on density and tonnage, and it varies a bit year to year, but.
The wild card, of course, is the closure of the Covanta incinerator and the fact that there's going to be more waste that needs a home in the region. So. You have more questions?
I guess, I mean, another option, you, can you choose to not take as much waste from other counties in an effort to extend? If, I mean, if we're running up into deadlines, would that be an option?
That would be something, that would be a decision that would be made by our area team. I, I can tell you that we feel confident that we have timed everything out appropriately so that we will not have any disruption in service. And we will be able to smoothly make the transition from 5E to 6A. And we are, as Ian said, already preparing 6B. So we have, you know, further continuity down the line in place. I can tell you that during the Benton County Talks Trash Process, this, this issue came up. And one of the things that, that we made very clear and we committed to during that process is that Benton County's trash will always have a home at Coffin Butte. The waste that comes from this county will always go to Coffin Butte as long as it's opening and operating. And if we have to make adjustments elsewhere, we will do that, but we will not make adjustments with Benton County.
Thank you. And I'm, oh, go ahead.
Just add to that, too, that we think the timing is really good for this conversation right now as Benton County gets ready to start the Sustainable Materials Management Plan and talk about this regional facility with regional partners. So we think it's great to have those conversations first before we would ever have to take any steps to make changes.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, highlight, I don't mean to, to beat a dead horse, but I'm sure you've all heard, we've all heard, one of the biggest concerns from the community is the fact that so much trash comes from other counties.
Yes, and we, you know, we, we hear that concern. We've obviously heard it, you've heard it. We do have contractual obligations to our customers in other counties. And so when we talk about the amount of waste that's coming into Coffin Butte, we do have to be cognizant of our, our customers in Western Oregon. And we, we continue to do that. And we, right now, I mean, we, we understand that we're in a tonnage cap situation, and we adhere to that. And we place, you know, high priority on serving all of our customers, but especially those in Benton County by ensuring the waste here has a place to go.
The other discussion I would like to have is just the issues raised by the disposal site advisory committee. But you can wait if you have more comments.
I have a few comments about the report. I appreciated the level of detail and transparency on some of the elements. The, the timeline, for instance, with respect to EPA was helpful, just laying it out. I, I do think it's a little muddy having the cross-year data in some places, but not in others in the report, and hoping we can get back to that annual cycle so we don't have to do that kind of catch-up. The, I'm still interested in, you know, that you talk about methane wells and having the highest highest density of methane wells or number of methane wells and far above typical best practices. But, you know, it doesn't mean anything to me without knowing whether that's the number of wells per ton of fill or the number of wells per type of geography, for instance. Because, you know, we know in wet areas versus in dry areas, you really need a different density of wells. So that figure alone doesn't mean a lot. I, I'm also interested in the cogeneration. Glad to hear that the flares are shielded now. The, but your, in your work with PNGC Power, is it up to them to decide when to expand that methane generation? And, you know, that trade-off between flare and generation, or is it up to you all?
I can, I can take this. I'll ask Brett to fill anything in, because I may not have the latest information. But we are actually in conversations with PNGC about purchasing additional gas from the landfill. We have not come to resolution on that, but we, we have been having those discussions. They've just been taking place with a, a different team and division within Republic Services. But Brett, do you have anything new on that?
Yeah, so basically how it works is we're monitoring the gas that we're burning at the, at the flares. And they have to have so much gas to run their generators. So there's always going to be a certain percentage that burns off until we can prove to them that there's enough to add, add additional generators. So we did approach them, and we are working with them. And basically what it comes down to is that now we're working with them to get additional generators or, or use the gas in an RNG system, or we have the right to use the gas ourselves. So it's kind of like, hey, we're giving them the opportunity, because, yeah, they kind of have the first right of refusal. And then if they don't want to use it, then we'll use it and, and either sell it or, you know, put in our own generation-type system. So that's where it's at.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I was also appreciative of the description of the Science-Based Targets Initiative that Republic, as a corporation nationally, participates in. I know that those kinds of metrics are very global, and they don't say much of anything about Coffin Butte landfill, per se. But it is, it was interesting, and I did follow through and look at much of that website and noticed that you truly are the only waste corporation in the States that is participating, that most of them were in Europe or Japan. So I applaud that. I hope that that does trickle down to every single site, you know, it's not just averages. I, with respect to the monitoring, I think there's still room for improvement. That's a longer conversation, and I hope that that will be held at the DSAC table. That's the right place for that conversation. But, you know, just looking at some of the, the selected monitoring tables that are included in the annual report, the start date is different for different substances. And the question comes up as to why? And just wanting to, to see trend over that longer period of time rather than just a truncated trend in some cases, that kind of thing.
Well, so I didn't, I don't know the exact tables, but some of them, it just depends on when the well was put in and when different requirements were put in for monitoring a specific parameter. So that's why they don't necessarily all start at the same time or all the same parameters. One thing we did suggest in DSAC is something we used to do years ago is having our geologists come in and give a presentation. You remember Eric Tuppin, he's since retired, but having our, our new geologists come in and give a presentation to DSAC to kind of walk through trends and give a little more scientific presentation on it versus the annual report's kind of more of a high level. If you, if you want to see all the data, it's in the actual DEQ report that the county has a copy of. But it'd be like 600 pages long to include it in here.
I, I do remember those reports, and I did not know that they were not occurring since Eric Tuppin's retirement, so. And footnoting, footnoting those tables.
We haven't, we haven't had DSAC meetings for them in a couple of years.
That's true.
That's partially why, so.
Reestablishing routines.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, because I remember those being very helpful discussions, and sometimes they got quite granular because of the expertise among the DSAC members. So I think that that's most of my questions, except for the fact that you mentioned that the, the full monitoring report is at the Health Department. Is it now at Community Development and not the Health Department? So that's an error in the report. So if someone is looking for that full report, it is now with Bailey Payne's shop in, in Community Development.
Oh, I'm fairly sure I talked about this last time you were here, but construction debris in Benton County, there's a table on page 46 of our packet showing amount by county of construction debris. Have we made any progress on keeping that out of the landfill?
So I think that we are looking forward again to this SMMP process with regional players, because we know that the amount of construction debris in Benton County, while any amount is great to pull out of the landfill and to recover, it's, it's a fairly small amount. And so regionally, this could be something that really enables us to put processes in place. So we're really looking forward to hearing what the SMMP process comes up with along those lines and then following up on those things. Also, we've met with Bailey yesterday to talk about, you know, in the eventual closure of Coffin Butte landfill years from now, we do need to talk about what happens at that point and, you know, where are their transfer stations? Where do things like that happen? So we continue to look at it, but we think we need to hear out the SMMP process before taking any action, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wise, you had some questions related to DSAC?
Yes, and I wasn't sure, Bailey, if you were going to talk about the DSAC meeting or, or the recommendations that are, or the questions, areas of concerns that are in our packet. And if not, I can just kind of read the, go down the list.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's actually been a couple of weeks since I've reviewed that document. I, I do recall there are some concerns around the monitoring. And I think, as Julie mentioned, having the geologists come and be able to discuss in a lot more detail. As Commissioner Ogero pointed out, there are a lot of very well-educated people on the DSAC and other community members have questions that I think a deep dive would, would really help with.
So I'll just kind of read the titles or the, you know, the, the parts in bold for their, their issues just for the record. So we have it in our meeting today. And it's page 73 of the electronic packet, and it's a letter from October 1st, 2024, addressed to the Commissioners. And their issues included high arsenic levels in groundwater, arsenic monitoring, methane releases, methane flares and fire safety, 2024 data in the 2023 report. And then they would like to acknowledge the extensive work and the effort that was put into this. And then this is more of a recommendation for the board, I think, but process recommendation. And the idea that we could sort of tighten up what we want to see and what DSAC wants to see. And I think that's a good idea. And so I don't know if, what, how much DSAC has on their plate or if they're willing to do something like this, but I would be interested in kind of coming up with that, with a process recommendation or a sort of like a, I don't know if a, sort of, not a draft, but like a, just a structure. And, you know, and get us thinking about what does the board want to see? What does the public want to see? What does DSAC want to see? What does Republic want to share? I think that would just be helpful for us moving forward.
I'll just say that we've had the same conversations, and it would be helpful for us to have a clarified list of additions or changes to the annual report, because it's, it's a little nebulous out there right now.
Yeah, I think so. I think those are great suggestions coming from the Disposal Site Advisory Committee, and we can all agree that clarity of process would be helpful so that people know what expectations are.
I was just gonna say, I second the idea of the geologist coming to talk to them, too, that, that sounds like a great idea.
As long as we're talking about improvements, there's a map on page 65. And that's part of my confusion on how you're approaching cell six. And that's part of my confusion on how you're approaching cell six. And then I noticed the date on the map is 2014. And I assume you have more up to date maps or just that notion of cell six is one big cell. It's individual cells, starting 6A and, and.
Yes, that, that map is from a different document. It's not part of the, the landfill design. It's part of our environmental monitoring plan. And it's just to show where all the monitoring wells are.
Okay.
So that's why it's, yeah, it doesn't show the subdivisions of six because it was last updated. The, the well map was last updated in 2014, so.
One of my questions has now been answered is there is something about, well, this cell will be full sometime in 2026. Well, that's not very far away. And but if you, I didn't connect that with multiple cells going through cell six. I'm a big fan of maps and you talk about the West End and. So it, at some point it'd be helpful and it doesn't have to be as, definitely as detailed as the one I'm looking at. But just, oh. I see where, and, and we're currently cell 5A, is that?
5E.
E.
5E, yeah.
Just.
Yeah, this, this map is from a totally different document than what our cell design is based off of.
Okay.
But I think we can.
Yeah, we can definitely.
We can send you what we have in terms of where the different sub-cells are, you know, 5A, 5B, 6A, that kind of thing.
That'd be helpful, especially when you're talking about a couple of years on this one. And but that there's a, a good plan in place for the sequence.
Ian also provided me a map that showed the dates of when each cell is. I forget if it's when it was constructed or finally built.
I don't remember. I'd have to go back and see what I sent you.
Helpful as well. And I can send you a copy of that.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it was part of one of the DSAC packets.
Any other questions? Are we ready for a motion?
It's a race to see who can get there first. Oh, that's far away. I move to accept the updated 2023 Coffin Butte and Pacific Region Compost Annual Report.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, thank you for all of the extra work and for coming back before us today. All in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Okay.
I, I, I do have one more question because we didn't talk about the compost facility. Is that at capacity? I'm thinking of being able to keep more organics out of the landfill and the compost facility handle any more organic waste.
I guess what I would say is, you know, we're not at capacity. We, you know, we continue to take volume in and out. One of the challenges we do have is actually moving material. And so we are looking at hiring a compost salesperson to help us move the material. We, we're also working with Julie currently. She's working and, and talking to cities and counties about taking some of the byproduct as ground cover for free. So if the county is interested in taking any of the large woody debris, it's like a heavy bark dust for trails or ground cover, let us know because we're constantly trying to find homes for that stuff. But yeah, we're not at capacity, but we are hiring somebody to tell, to help us move material.
And I'll just put in my shameless plug for this, as I like to do. But one of the issues, I think, in Oregon and across the country in general is we want to do something beneficial with this organic material and keep it out of landfills. But we do need to find solutions for the finished product and get it out there and back on the ground. We can't just stockpile it. So that's a, a solution that we'd love to see actually come up during the SMMP process so that this material can get back out and keep us in a situation where we have lots of capacity to take more in.
And is that material also tested for any kind of contamination residue?
It, it is, and.
Seeing head nods back there from Brett.
Yeah, and, and we have a new process that Brett has, has been sort of testing with this large woody material where we put it through a density separator. And we've been really successful in getting a lot of that contamination out of there. I know a couple of communities have taken us up and we've made that offer to Benton County as well to have some of that material at no cost. And they've been really pleased with what's in that material. So there's that. And then of course, constant education to keep plastics and other materials out of the organic material.
Yeah, so hopefully our natural areas, parks and events, Director Jesse Yott can reach out and perhaps use that material.
He dropped off a sample bag about a week ago, so we'll see what happens.
I appreciate that offer and I wonder if you might be willing to extend it to some of the incorporated areas, especially the smaller cities, would have much smaller budgets. So that might even benefit them even more.
Yeah, I'll let you know, Dare Village, I think, is going to take some material and Palomith is interested and City of Corvallis as well. So we're looking at it for a lot of different communities and we'd love to get it out everywhere. We'd love to get a big giant pile into a very small pile so that we can take more in.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, we, thank you very much. We're moving on next to approval of the 2025 Environmental Health Licensing Fees, a topic that we've addressed once before this year with April Holland and Scott Kruger.
Good morning. We're back. On October 1st, the board approved the, the Environmental Health Licensing Fees, the increase of an average of 5% for 2025. And the resolution in front of you, or the order, sorry, in front of you reflects that. Scott, did you have anything to add?
Okay, short and sweet. Are there any questions for Scott or April? And then we're ready for a motion.
I move to approve order number D 2024, day 055, implementing the proposed 2025 B schedule for environmental health effective January 1, 2025.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you. And April, while you're here, I have one more question that I meant to ask Sarah. Do we have a new communicable disease nurse onboard?
We do not have a new communicable disease program nurse. Mary Shaughnessy continues to serve in that role. I know that there are plentiful discussions about the, the makeup of the Communicable Disease Program Team. And we may or may not see some policy option packages in the next budget cycle. Sarah, did you have anything to add there? We have.
So as we have someone acting in capacity, sorry, Rick, I missed Scott to take over. And sorry for misnaming you. I knew someone named Rick Kruger in my early days and it slipped out. Yeah, I, I just wanted to make, you had mentioned that we're still working with the long-term care facilities and, but obviously the team composition is different. Ah, got it.
We, we just, we just hired a, a new case investigator for our communicable disease team. And we are recruiting for a contact investigator at the moment. So we're hoping to have a team of three, along with Gerald Dyer Jr., who's still the manager and, and also participates in outbreaks and case investigation monitoring when appropriate. We did hire a new immunization nurse to replace longtime immunization program coordinator Cindy Udi Angelillo. And, and they have been actively collaborating, our communicable disease team and our immunization to reach out to long-term care facilities. But April is correct. We, 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 we will be proposing a POP for the new biennium to, to increase our CD capacity.
Thank you.
You, you, you mentioned Cindy's name and I, I remember. I can guess that she, she will be hard to replace. But I, the GT did a nice story some years back of Cindy and her little red wagon going out into the hard-to-reach community and reaching them. And so just fond memories of Cindy and her little red wagon and doing a great job for a lot of years.
Cindy is hard to replace. She was supposed to retire prior to COVID-19 pandemic and stayed on with us to help us get through that. And she is providing onboarding support to our new immunization coordinator, who, we all bring different things to the job and our new immunization coordinator is quite amazing as well.
Now, I'll just add that Cindy is in a, she's an exemplary demonstration of the heart of, of public health that can be seen in, in everyone on, on that team. It's wonderful. We do miss her.
When you see her, tell her thank you.
Thank you, and I believe the next item is also April. Thank you for coming back up, Sarah, and indulging me in that line of questioning. The next item of business is a request for approval of behavioral health permanent position reclassification.
Thank you so much. Damien is in negotiations with OHA right now, so I'm taking lead on this one. This reclassification is from a C41 QMHA position to a C42 CADC or a Certified Alcohol and Drug Counselor Position within the Substance Use Disorder Team in Behavioral Health. So the estimated increase you see there, just under $5,000 for the reclassification, will be paid for using an increase of funds specifically for behavioral health deflection. Not the same pot of funds for, from, from CJC for the county's deflection program. And as the SUD program is based on a fee-for-service model versus a capitation per, per population model, it will generate, you know, sufficient funds moving forward to continue to sustain the position. So we look forward to having more ability to provide SUD services, both for the deflection program and beyond with this newly classified position.
Commissioner Ogero, if I might add, and just for the Commissioners' understanding, you might recall that we try to not bring these in front of you and create budget neutrality in all cases. But sometimes that doesn't happen. And in this particular case, I just want to point out, as April alluded to, that this is supported by new resources or identified resources in our budget. So again, it's always our intent to try to create a no-cost effect. But in this case, I can assure you that resources are there to pay for it.
I do have one follow-up question. Is the reclassification more about attracting people to the position? Or is it about the, the services that can be provided by someone that's classified as a professional healthcare two versus one?
I, I, I don't, I believe that it's the CADC designation and that, that C42 level is what's needed for.
For a CADC?
Yes.
Got it.
And I'll, I'll make a correction if I, if I don't have that right. That's my understanding.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Nope, just that I support this.
Okay, then I'm ready for a motion.
I'll move to approve the reclassification of the requested position from Healthcare Professional 1 to Healthcare Professional 2.
Second. All in favor, signify with an eye.
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 Thank you. So we're moving on to resource naming policy revisions to that policy, A109. And Sean Maguire is presenting. The mic is not on. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't see there. Sorry about that. Again, good morning, Commissioners. Apparently this is the first time I've ever done this. So anyway, so before you today, I was here, I guess, last month. You had requested an update to our facility and lands naming policy. Previous one was incredibly vague and very brief. And so this one, we went through and updated it, gave a little more clarity and far more procedural, step-by-step, how it, how it should work. So I'll go walk you through that very quickly. Page one is more on the legal side. This has been reviewed by Vance. Second page is looking at, back up here just a little bit. We, we wanted the policy to be a little bit on the vague side and have the procedures be very specific. Just procedurally, it's a little, any policy has to go through the whole rigor roll and that takes weeks. Procedures can be done immediately. So that's why the policy is a little more vague and we can know the procedures. So we talk a lot about our significant contributions to Benton County culture and historically significant persons. There may be a situation where you want a specific individual or group to be identified. That's on your discretion. On the naming process, the actual policy will be that you will, two steps. You will direct the county administrator, let's move forward on a new land or facility, and to provide guidance on where that goes. And I'll return back to that in the procedural. I wanted to kind of stop right here on the section B where it says, "An exercise in the authority, Board of Commissioners shall consider names that," you can read that. We had one comment from the, from our staff, they kind of, that addressed the easily understood and appreciated. I think it was a great comment. It was on, the intent was making sure it's not the county facility that has finance and public records and the BSC, something that can be understood easily by the public, but not to a point where if it is a cultural name, it might be either hard to pronounce or something that we shy away from that. We should lean into that. I think that's a great comment. We feel that that's within the balance of this. But not, just making sure that we're not sitting here going, oh, it has to be the one syllable thing. And so what will, in the procedures, hopefully that will be addressed. So I just wanted to say there was one comment. We support their, their intent. We feel that that's integrated into the, into the policy before you. Getting into the actual procedures where I wanted to kind of lean in on. The naming process, again, step one, you instruct the administrator to name a facility and we're going to have several coming in, coming on. And I know that this is a high priority for you all. Second, and this was the important part, that you provide general direction of what you're thinking. So as background, everybody may know, this facility, there was intent to respect our indigenous communities. And remember, Lalea and Joe Hong really leaning in and talking to other members of our communities. And that was the intent. Now, if on future facilities, there is a specific intent that you three have, we just didn't want to have staff going in either direction and you had something specific. We just have the new one across the street. If you have specific names, the April Holland Awesome Health Facility, great. But having, making sure that the facilitator that we'll get into in a second is going the direction that you. that you want. So, the third step is that the administrator will point to a facilitator and that individual will shepherd this whole process through. The intent is that that would be in the B O C office. It's not necessarily required, but it's a point person to make sure that this is expedited. The previous one was that the one to one of the committees, it was a fear that that might take months on end, if they're meeting monthly, how does that work through? If there's something, again, there is something specific, expedite that very quickly and be, and be done. So, then you can kind of go through the step-by-step. Just wanted to highlight that procedural operations to make sure that you're comfortable with that so we can get moving on it. When it's all said and done, the, it's up to that facilitator to reach both inward and outward, there's language in here for the P I O that, to, to capture input and guidance from the public, whether that could be an online survey, listening sessions, et cetera. So, at the end, we'll, the facilitator will come to you with three to five recommendations, and you have your three options. Select a recommended name, select something that you want because you have that opportunity, or we go back to the drawing board. And once the decision is made, that is final. That's the step-by-step, and wanted to get feedback from you all.
Well, I appreciate the effort that went into making it clear what the process is, but leaving enough flexibility to have a good process and hopefully a good product out of this. So, I, I think whoever was involved in crafting this did a nice job and, and I appreciate your explanation of policy versus the process and where the, where the flexibility is versus the kind of directing step-by-step. That's, that's what I had.
Yep, I agree. I appreciate the intentionality of keeping the policies vague and the procedures specific. So, thank you.
I, I too think that this is a, a good clarification of our previous kind of hard-to-follow approach. And I'm grateful that we do have a list of criteria in the policy. I think that's the most important component of, of the policy per se, the sources in the process. So, I'm very comfortable with this approach. And then, we just need to figure out next, after approving the policy, when we want to trigger it for the first couple of properties that we need to name. Ready for a motion?
Okay. I move to approve revised policy A one oh nine resource naming.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, we have blazed through our agenda for today. Is there any other business further good to the order? Other than welcoming Vance back from vacation? Okay, then, meeting is adjourned.